It's just the town council and Board of Finance liaison, finance and government. Meeting and roll call is Neil Buttnick.
Yeah.
And Judy Neville. Uh, Mark Rzysinski, is he on yet?
Yes.
I'm here.
Okay, good. Oh, right. Um. Rita Patina.
I'm here.
Luke Kaufman. Um Christina Ross.
Here.
Teddy Young.
I'm here.
So all present except for Rita.
No.
For Luke, I'm sorry, you're right. All right. It's all yours. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just starting on page one at the first selectmen's office. So that sees a five point six percent increase over last year's budget. It's main highlight being the twenty thousand dollars going to economic development, which.
Yeah, um, they're doing three initiatives.
That's T D A, right? That's, that's the, the T D A committee?
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So they came up with, um, yeah, that's so many. The three initiatives were a business development guide for this town. They're doing a October for design and then some miscellaneous basic marketing. So that's their driving their initiatives for this year or this coming year.
So that's like, that's the major increase for them. The other one would be just their four one A contributions. Uh, which is, you know, just people coming off, but it's, it's with staffing, coming off of the town union.
Town pension plan.
Town pension plan and coming on to the four one A plan. So we kind of see that as a, uh, a trend throughout a lot of these departments.
So is that, is that you're trying, is that your, how you're explaining? Cause I'm, I'm just looking at the right hand column. So it's a hundred and sixty percent increase on part time, I guess that is, and overtime is sixteen percent. Is that what you're?
So I'm referencing over here, this, this increase here.
Am I looking at the wrong?
Oh, the last one is the budget versus an actual right now.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Realize where you were looking. Okay.
Right. So it's, it's, it's a ten thousand dollar ish increase over last year, which is, I think it's, it's really only one staff that turned over being, uh, Tucker.
Tucker took over from Tom and Tom was pension and Tom, Tom was defined benefit. Tucker is now defined contribution.
That's right.
Okay, that, that sixty percent increase, it's a salaries overtime. I'm just, is that the right thing that I'm looking at?
No, so what we're, what we're referring to here is this, the, uh, four one A employer contribution.
Oh, you're looking at the right column. Yes, you are looking at the right column.
Right. So I see employer contributions and I see overtime is increased by sixty, but it's a small, it's off a small base.
It's incremental. Yeah.
Got it. Got it. All right. Thanks.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions on the first election?
Yeah, uh, salaries part time, uh, that's the breakdown of the three initiatives or is there something else in there?
So the three initiatives is this economic development line.
Yeah, I saw, yeah.
Which is the, it's just a straight twenty thousand here. Oh, sorry. It's, it's a fifty thousand is the total. It was thirty thousand last year. So it was an increase of twenty thousand.
Could I, could I just intervene and ask you, does this include the ARPA funds?
No. I don't think the ARPA funds are found anywhere in the budget.
Okay, but nothing has been taken from the ARPA funds and transferred into the operating budget?
No, no.
Okay.
Not directly at least.
Hmm. What do you mean not directly? There's gonna be any going in there.
Okay, yeah, no, some of the ARPA funds, you know, have been approved already. Those ARPA funds are sitting in a grant fund. So.
Yes, right.
An expense that the revenue sitting over there, we have expenditures, they're going to move into that grant. So they're not flowing through the general fund.
My, my question specific with, uh, there were a total of sixty thousand, twenty thousand per year over three years to the Board of Realtors. And for the campaign on promoting New Canaan, I just want to make sure that the twenty thousand dollar increase has nothing to do with the twenty thousand increase allotted.
No, no.
No, no.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So moving down to finance, bottom of the page.
Just one thing there. So if I went back, what did we have last year? Wasn't our increase zero?
What was that?
Was our increase but last year wasn't it zero?
Yes, from what's the whole budget perspective? Yes.
Yeah. So this is going to knock it into the over five percent, e- even though it is not a lot of dollars, it's going to not put it on the list uh, uh, of higher than average increase, right? There's a couple of things on that list. Um, your answer to that is going to be what? It's going to be the staffing thing.
The economic development, that's.
It's all under economic, yeah, it's all under economic development. So that's what they're putting forward for me.
But that's only, only twenty, you said thirty thousand.
So it went from thirty last year to fifty this year.
So, and I can, I can kind of speak to that too, because the reason that more money was floated that their way, as far as I understand it, is because of all the, you know, the vacancies and I mean, there's a lot of concern about the local businesses like thriving and that was why I, I, my understanding is why there's more money being put into economic development.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, it's a big increase.
Yeah, it is.
But, you know, it's going to put us in the big increase column. But that's okay if you can defend it, you know?
Yeah, I'm just, I just, I need to hear more. Yeah.
Yeah. You'll get questions about that because anything that comes in over five is going to put it on the red flag. So that I'm just pointing it out, how you presented it. And if you presented it as a development program, that's, that was sort of hoisted on you anyway. So.
Yeah. And personally, I, I don't have as much of an issue of the fact that it's there, but that it's in, under the first selectmen's budget. Like I, I actually think it's an important thing to support. Um, I guess I'm wondering why it's here and not a regular budget.
Yeah. Tucker is.
Tucker's overseeing it.
Yeah, but the fact is that T D A doesn't have a budget, so it has to be under a department.
Right.
And the department is the board of selectmen. Or the first.
I, I understand why it's there, I guess. And I'm, you know, I'm new to this process. I just.
No, it's a great question. I think that's.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's under the purview of the first selectmen. Why? Like, why isn't it? Yeah. Why doesn't it have a budget or why? And I'm sure it wasn't done. It was just probably done because we needed to get it done. And I, I don't, I don't question the integrity. I just think, I just wonder like if that is the right decision going forward to keep it there.
Well, I guess, uh, where, where else could it go? Is it probably?
I'm starting to think where we, cause you know, we can't put it under Parkinson Rex or DPW or anything like that, because it's not under purview for spending and accessibility of that particular fund, of those funds. So, um, the first election seemed like the best place to put it from accessibility and the fact that Tucker is the one that's going to be uh, working with these committees on these initiatives.
Right. And I, actually, I think it's a great organization. I think Tucker's showing a tremendous job. I, this is more just in terms of optics and in terms of how we're, you know what I mean? Like I just, it, it does beg the question.
Hey, hey, Judy, just a quick, um, uh, housekeeping note. Uh, I think you forgot Maria Naughton as, uh, a member of this. Oh, you did. Okay. Cause she's not present, or at least I didn't, I didn't think I heard it, but anyway.
Oh, she, okay. She confirmed she's, I think she's coming late, but you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. Sorry. Sorry about, so, sorry about that, everyone.
Well, this is an interesting thing. Uh, I'm just saying, you look at Kevin's open space program, where did we put that?
Conservation.
What's that?
Conservation.
Conservation. You could have put that under selectmen, I suppose. He's accountable.
But wasn't it a recommendation coming out of the conservation commission?
For, for about twenty five years, uh, where you, before we had a conservation commission, we had that same recommendation. It's been everywhere. Um, it's, again, it's where you want to put it. It's another.
And I'm not, again, I'm, I'm, I'm new, right? So I'm just learning, but like there are other, you know, there's parks and racers. I mean, there are other committees with budgets. I would think that the health, the business, you know, uh, vitality for the, for the, for the town is important.
Would you think that it would be better if it was on the finance?
Um, possibly. I, I guess, I don't know who's, like, where's the, like, what oversight is there? Like who's overs, I understand Tucker's overseeing it, but from a town perspective, where's the oversight?
Must be the first selectmen.
First selectmen.
First selectmen is just, okay. So yeah, so it's, so it's, so it's Kevin.
Yeah, I think this is an executive.
It should go through board of selectmen technically. I mean, it should be a larger, uh, view.
Yeah. So, so I'm just, I'm just questioning more the proprietary, like the propriety of having it there and not the, it may be, we may want to consider just where it is, but I, I think it's a very, uh, I think it's a reasonable amount. I think it's an important aspect. We should be funding and, and helping to support. Um, I just questioning where it is. That's all.
Okay. So I guess we'll put that on the list, whoever, whoever is accountable to the list.
You're not questioning why it's a taxpayer responsibility?
What's that?
I do. I actually.
I don't know why it's a taxpayer responsibility, frankly, but.
No, it's, I, it's a communal responsibility, but I know that it should be an operating expenditure. I, you know, I just, I'm unclear with that in my own mind.
I mean, I mean, our business, I mean, the businesses are the backbone, like they, they contribute to the.
Oh, we all agree with that, but.
Right. I mean.
But they have to make a contribution to, and they do. I mean, they do. It's not, but from this standpoint, they don't. There's no offset here.
And I'm, and I'm kind of concerned about the optics and the oversight.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
I'm sure there'll be more questions on this, right? Right, Neil? We'll, we'll get it first. We'll get it hammered.
Yeah, right. This is a liaison meeting, so it's, we're supposed to identify issues to talk about and focus on. So.
Sure. I mean, we can have Tucker. Have a bit more length when, when this is, uh, brought for the, for the finance.
Yeah, just to let you know, I, I was on T D A, so I'm not, um, and worked closely with Tucker. So I, you know, I'm not against it.
So I have a question regarding the, under the first selectmen's budget, the part-time salary increase of a hundred and sixty percent.
So that's, it's, it's really an increase of one percent. It's budget versus actual of twenty twenty one, where it was a hundred and sixty percent increase.
Why are we, what, what function is the part-time position?
So there's two, there's a, um, per ordinance charter, there's a stipend towards the two selectmen on the board and then the. Sorry? Oh, I thought that was a question. And then in addition, um, there's a part-time staff member for about twenty five thousand has been doing all the different projects that have been going around town between the way, maybe between sewer fees to a sewer assessment to sewer fees. So we have this person who's working on all different pieces of projects right now, who's doing the twenty five thousand. And like I said, the other, uh, what was the other dog about eighteen or so? Sixteen. The other sixteen is related to, um, a charter stipend towards the two selectmen.
I, I understand, but, um, the sewer and other studies, shouldn't that go under the Department of Public Works? Why is it under the first selectmen?
This is the person, this person is a generic, this person does a lot for all different departments, not one. So we can't, we're not piecing him out to all different departments. He's got different projects that he worked for. He could work on a finance for me at some point. Um, when he has different projects that are winding down. So he is someone who does a bit for all different departments. So the cleanest place was to keep him the first selectmen and then he goes to work and help where it needed.
So his salary does get split between other departments as well. I think he's partly.
Partly, not much though.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And what, what is his total cost? Where is this now? It's the.
Under part-time.
I know, but, but it's not. I don't, broken out. I don't have any.
Forty one thou, it's forty one thousand four fifty two.
Yeah.
Um, that's broken down between sixteen thousand for the stipend and twenty five four for a change for, um, the project, yeah, the project coordinator, thank you.
All right.
The stipend being the two selectmen.
Correct.
Their salaries, what, eight thousand sixty five or something like that a year?
Right.
Any more questions on the first selectmen's office?
Oh, that's enough. Yeah.
We here all do that.
Oh, yeah. Well, yeah, it's where you put it and it's who's authorizing it, who's spending it and, yeah.
So moving down to the finance department, it's, uh, it's a three percent year-over-year increase. And the majority and all of it is really just for rate, it's salary changes that took place. As you know, there's been a lot of staffing changes in the finance department, of course. Uh, myself and Diane Wilson have all, um, had adjustments or been brought on in the past year.
And we're doing a lot of different projects currently. One of them is a changeover to, um, a new banking service going from Webster to J P Morgan Chase. So there's a lot of time and investment in getting that changeover, um, processed. Um, on top of all the changes that, you know, relatively new into the positions.
That's not overtime?
Yes, yes.
Can you explain, um, service contracts?
Yeah, that's, um, that's the service, the software support for Immunis, which is our software, financial software. Excuse me. It's a financial software product that we use. Um, you know, the annual report service, uh, there, we're. We're hosted. So there's all the different modules that we use under that, um, unit. There's different modules that we go through receivables, uh, general ledger, things like that. And this is the annual service fee.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Can I ask a question? Why the, uh, four oh one K contributions going down? Is that related to the, uh, tenure, I, I, or engine in, or, or what's causing that? I just wouldn't think that number would ever go down.
It's a good question.
Yeah, I just have to look that up because I don't think, uh, well, one of the positions, the controller changed, so that went down slightly. So just looking real quick to the previous year. One of the positions, there was a change, oh, that's what it was. I'm sorry, Joanne Newman, uh, was the previous controller. Um, she left and we brought in, uh, someone was hired up into that position, but didn't come in at that salary because the other person had been in there for so long. So there's a salary differential there. So the four one K contribution will be slight, would be less.
Okay. All right. Uh, that's it for me in this area.
Can you speak to travel? Can, but that's a, who's traveling where? What?
I think, yeah.
Travel typically is, um, for the finance, it's going to be, there's two organizations that we're governed by, or not governed, somewhat quasi governed by the G F O A um, and the Connecticut G F O A. And that's where, um, typically you go to those conferences for all the other different changes, uh, whether there's a Immunis user group meeting, although this year I think, I believe it's locally in Connecticut, so that's good. So there, there are conferences that are connected to the organization, which is, you probably know, G F O A is our government, uh, Government Finance Officers Association. And that's where we get the award for the budget book. We get the award, hopefully again, for the, uh, our, um, effort, the annual reporting. So they come out with all the different policies, procedures and guidelines for us. Um, so that's for those conferences mainly.
Okay.
And they haven't been attended, other than maybe a, a Zoom one, they haven't been attended in probably a couple of years.
The G F O A, tell me again what its name is, Governor's Finance.
Government, Government Finance Officer, Government Finance Officer Association.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And there's the Connecticut branch and there's a national branch.
I just think you, cause you haven't seen it in a couple of years, Christina, that's why it's coming back on.
Right. Yeah. It is very, I have to say, it is a very, I have gone a couple of years myself, even being in a different town. Um, and it is a massive resource and a way to get to see your peers at one shot on different things.
I used to, for the. I used to go to it and you really see every minute. And they put out guidelines, standards for auditing and all that. It's really good.
Yeah.
For this, for the sake of our economy, we, we need to see all of this stuff come back. Travel, et cetera.
Well, true. Yeah, we're ready to get the economy going again.
Maybe we should put that under economic development.
Yeah.
It's a good one, Neil.
Just kidding. Okay, I think we just, I think deep this one up.
Yeah.
What are we doing?
I'm, I'm, I'm trailing down here, uh, and the changes in legal are because.
I think we lost them.
Yep.
There's one. Right.
There they come.
Yep. Thanks so much.
Sorry about that, guys.
Oh, well.
Higher Town Hall lost internet briefly.
So that's comforting.
We're, we're scrolling down here, um, and maybe you could address, you know, unless anybody has questions on tax assessor and tax collector.
Are we sharing the screen?
Yeah, for one moment, for some reason that hiccup.
We'll have to share.
Block the ability to share. So that's what's good.
I have a quick question on the tax assessor.
Yeah?
The, the website or the vendor that used to post the actual details on each property in New Canaan has changed. It changed maybe within the past year. And I wanted to know if it's under a different contract or did we redefine the information that's provided to the public?
Um, from what I understand, I, I can hear confirmation. We went to E, um, quality data, quality data service. Um, E, I think it's E assessment, it's called, um, from, it used to be vision and they went over to a new service. So it's a new vendor, a new carrier, a new vendor, but I'll confirm that.
Okay.
So we should have been sharing up momentarily, but hopefully everyone has their packets in front of them. So we.
I, yeah, I've got it on my, my screen as well. Um.
Can I ask, can I, can I ask a question? Uh, we're on tax assessor, right? Just to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, for the most part, it's the salaries from submission to modified. There was a decline of, you know, roughly eight thousand dollars. What, 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 what's the reason for that? Cause it doesn't look like you really, you really do that in many.
So it's, it's really just salary turnover, uh, it's staffing turnover.
Staffing turnover. So they're coming in at a lower rate than, uh, on the contract than what the person going out.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah.
Belonged to, it was belonging to the collector.
Sure. Any other questions on assessor before they move to collector?
Nope.
Okay. So the tax collector also relatively flat, has just an increase of one percent over last year, which is really entirely personnel.
Any questions on this department?
Um, no salary increases?
There were, there was a salary increase for, um, the two union positions.
Okay.
The tax collector, the assistant tax collector.
Okay.
And slight, slight collector. But mainly on the deputy and the, uh, the other assistant.
Okay.
And moving on to legal, that's down sixteen percent from last year.
So some of the issues that were up this year will not be continuing. So that expectation will not be there.
With all the contract bargaining or collective bargaining agreements are, were prior year. So those won't be taking place next year. Um, I'm not sure if the two twenty L factor into that anyway. I don't know if that's the case.
No, that'll be this, this, yeah, this year. So we're good.
Unless there's questions, we can move on to H R.
Is that realistic for the legal to go down that much?
Well, yes, based on some of the cases that they had, cases, some of the things that they were going through that aren't there anymore.
Okay.
So that means, so, um. Yeah, yeah. And that's in con, you know, that's in consultation with the town council and things like that on what they think.
Oh, no, I, yeah.
And what's, um, and if I, I may have missed this, what advertising for um, tax assessor? I know it's a small amount. I'm just curious why it's there.
There's, there's certain statutory requirements for both the collector and the assessor that they have to post things in the paper. Uh, and then they have to do, you know, they have their assessment appeal twice a year. They have the, um, real estate in typically April and then real, uh, motor vehicle in September. So they have statutory things they have to post in the paper. And when tax bills, well, that's tax collector. But the assessor has the, uh, assessment appeal and, um, notification of the grand list is filed. So.
Gotcha. It just seems, you know, odd to see advertising under.
I know. And they've been trying to get rid of that. They've been trying to get rid of it because, you know, a lot of people don't use the newspaper so much anymore. Everything's online. Um, and during the, even during the pandemic, uh, they weren't allowed to stop that statute and just put it on the website or, you know, link somewhere. They still had to advertise.
Yeah. I mean, I would say notification or something. I don't know. It's just, it, it doesn't matter. It's such a small amount. I just.
It's a statutory requirement for both those offices.
To say advertising, to say.
That's been before the legislature for years.
Yes, I remember that.
And the, um, the, uh, publicer, publication industry has been able to lobby against it. Um, you know, for online, um, noticing because it's their advertising budget.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Well, it's not a whatever. It's a significant expense for where you put all the municipalities together.
It does add up. I just, no, I'm saying whatever. I, I was more at, in derision of what they're doing, not, not that it is, that it isn't, uh, you know, something to, to be aware of or concerned about.
Right. Well, speak to your legislators.
That's been a fine for, I remember having to put numbers together in a different municipality that was spending four hundred and fifty, three thousand dollars a year on advertising that they were statutes they had to do. And that was ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah. Again, I, I, I think the idea of notifying the public about things makes sense. I think the terminology is a little concerning to me is all.
Speak to your legislators, as I said, it's, it's a legislative issue.
Yep, yep.
So moving ahead to the H R department, it's also relatively flat, a point five percent increase over last year. Um, basically all the changes taking place within salary line items as well.
Any questions on this department?
Well, in terms of training, tuition reimbursement, is that just down because no one is, is that because of the pandemic or I? Well, in terms of training, tuition reimbursement, is that just down because no one, is, is that because of the pandemic, or I, or is that?
I'm in the middle of a meeting, but I can answer you.
Usually what, uh, you know, they'll ask in advance who they believe that they're going to have tuition re, uh, training on. Um, and if they don't have anyone, they're not going to budget it because in their, in their particular department, they don't have it. I'm not sure if there's any other additional, um, because if you can see some of the, you know, twenty-one was down at.
Can you get, can you get, can you get Jett, Gretchen?
Penny, can you mute?
All right, moving on here. All right, what's next?
So next would be INT.
All right, let's see if I, yeah, that looks right, yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, contractual increases.
So again, it's just a half a percent all on salary.
But this is also the reliability and security issue that we talked about in executive session, so this is a nominal increased expense given the, the overview. Um, all right, um.
All right, so on to the town clerk's office.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, and part of this is because I'm just learning, but, um, I would think information technology, especially now, and especially with all of the threat, I don't know if it would be here, but the threat of cyber attacks, are we, do we feel like the budget is?
Yeah, we, what, actually, Rita, we went through all this and it has been increased appropriately and I, nobody, any, nobody had any qualms about spending more money, more provided.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm, that's what I was more concerned about, that we have enough covered, because cyber attacks are increasing and they're, and they're very disruptive.
We're doing really well here.
Right.
I mean, FBI and all of that was down in a heart flash the last time, so we're, we're comfortable.
Okay.
Wouldn't you agree?
Yeah, we, we had executive session on it, we went through all the details, assessments. What's happening with ransomware and everything, it was good.
Yeah, great. All, um. What, what's the, the town clerk here as well, wow, Jesus.
So the town clerk is down four point six percent. Which is led by the outside contract services.
And I, I just have to confirm this one, and I apologize, I should have confirmed it before, um. Most of the town clerks, town clerks throughout the state were bringing in their servicer, um, caught, whoever it was, to get digital records online. So I need to just confirm if that's what this was, because it's a one-year spike. And I know a lot of, um, town clerks were trying to get those records, so people, during the pandemic, so people had access to it online, but I'll get a confirmation email that too on that.
Yeah, so for the past three years, nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, it's been pretty flat at thirteen, fifteen, fifteen. And this is kind of returning back towards that, at seventeen. From the spike of last year, forty-six. Awesome.
It, it also seems like across the board overtime is, is high, or is, uh, has gone up across the board due to the pandemic?
Well, last time, I don't know about next time, is it budgeted for the same, I mean, Lord.
Is what, what was the question?
Oh, or town clerk could be, now just, they have, um, they're going to have the elections. And this year is going to be the, um, mid-year elections and also they'll probably have some primaries. So it, although you think the register of voters are the main ones because they're at the polling stations. The, the tact, the town clerk is heavily involved in ballots and absentee ballots, excuse me, absentee ballots. And, um, that is a significant time strain on those with having a primary and somewhat of a bigger election being in, uh, mid, uh, midterm elections.
Okay.
So they'll need additional staff.
But they had additional staff last time, a lot of it. Where, you know, it's contrast, I can't understand why it would be. So, well, that's not, it's not huge, I guess.
They had additional staff in FY twenty-one.
Sure did, all the time.
And was that the presidential election FY twenty-one?
Right, and they also, because of, um, pandemic and the separation of it, they had to keep it separate. Uh, they needed more staff for the safety of everything, so they had to increase staffing levels.
There's a lot of counting they did this last election too.
Yeah.
Extra counting.
Yeah.
I, I'd go back to the town clerk and just get a feel of what she thinks too.
Okay.
Did she present, or did she just submit this?
She did not present, no.
Well, maybe we, maybe we should, at the Board of Finance, I don't know, it's up to you, um.
Since it's frequently questioned, Judy.
Well, we have, yeah, we have.
Uh, it might be nice if you, if it is done in, in person, so that you really understand what's in those numbers.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Because often there is a conversation about general, two different ways of interpreting it. Shall I say?
Yeah, I, I, I have a pretty long history of this, it's ridiculous.
That's why I was not being more specific.
Right, but, but we all.
And I would hope in that number, if New Canaan is digitizing and not, not digitizing.
I thought that was passed, that we were asked to digitize, is that incorrect? Is that conforming, or is that just a request?
If you ask, it was a states statute that came down to do it.
I thought so, I read that, but I don't know if that includes this, I mean, maybe it does, maybe there's more in it than this. But does it, it includes the digitalizing, or it's other things?
Can, can you expand on what you mean by the digitizing of what?
That everything is scanned, and so that you don't have to come into the office to access the data.
Well, but that's a problem, because there's a lot of private information that you don't want to put it out there.
Well, that was part of what the services, they had to redact, the company had to redact, go through the records and redacted. So they had clothing documents or, um, well, they had to go through the records anyway, because they should be redacted when they're on there, because they shouldn't be out in the public anyway. So, it should be redacted when they're actually filed with the town clerk. Um, so they're not out there, because anybody can get it, so they, there, there was also the service to make sure that there was no records out there from historical records that nobody, you know, from twenty, thirty years ago. The companies were coming in and, and they have the software to go through the records to pick up particular fields, social security numbers, things like, like that, that might have gotten through years ago. So that if they put them online, they're not there now. And then redacted the hard copy records, so there was a big.
Good thing, I mean, that's a good.
That, no, it's a good service, because, you know, nobody knows thirty years ago what someone did or didn't, you know, how clear they were. Um, I just know from other municipalities I've worked in, it was actually a really good thing that these companies, mostly cotton is the main company that does it. That they scanned it all, redacted it all, going back to some of them, going back to the, you know, late eighteen hundreds, they were putting records online.
But is that, that what this number represents?
It should, but I'm going to confirm that for you, I'll put it in.
Also, besides that, yeah.
Yeah, and I'll send the email and, um, make sure you have all the follow-up answers.
Okay.
How many towns have put all of that information, um, accessible to the public?
I don't know all Canada, I'd have to ask that.
Actually had this discussion in Board of Finance, and I think we all lean towards not conforming and having everything available that ever, that other towns may have, that wasn't the sense of the community. Um, I'm sure it'll get discussed again, but, um.
I'm not understanding, are you saying that the town is not going to put everything online, or they are?
Well, it, there was question as to how much information people wanted about other residents online. Remember this nail at length?
Very.
Yeah. I'm sure it'll come up again, but, uh, because, you know, Kevin was looking for, for insight on this, I mean, he wasn't one way or the other either, so we were all a little bit, a little bit here and a little bit there.
I know that Greenwich has not published everything online, and I just wanted to know to what degree New Canaan is doing it. Because a lot of people don't want their information made public. Or we all are going to have to take, uh, deed insurance, or mortgage protection insurance.
Well, what, I mean, I just want to make sure on this, because what's in the town clerk is what anybody could walk in and pick up anyway. So, it's an ease of access, right, it's an ease of access, because someone can still do it from home versus actually anywhere in the world.
The difference is that when you get into those documents, it can be taken from anybody in the world, going to the, um, have a level of accessibility.
They're not free, they're not free either, it's not like they can just log on and find it. Most, um, whatever the fee structure was in the, in your off, in the office to come in, is a fee structure that's set up online as well.
Well, we have the same issue with tax available information, tax assessors, I mean, this is all, this is all evolving, I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, for all towns, but we're, we tend to be cautious, careful and conservative, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um. Health and security, all right, let's see, any questions, anybody?
Yep.
All right, moving on, um. So the.
Register voters is the next one, right?
Yeah, well.
Yeah. Any questions on that department?
No. No.
But it just, in case, you know, somebody are not aware that the redistrict, redistricting is happening, so we're going from three districts to seven. So there is an increase needed in staff. Um, to man those stations and also to make sure that there is an assistant registrar at each location now of the seven. So that's why you'll see, um, there'll be personnel increases, because they're going to need more poll workers and they're going to need, um, the deputy registrars at each location.
This is absolutely off-scale absurd.
Yeah, the whole state's going through some sort of registries, redistricting.
It's called germanding.
If I, if I had a dollar for every time I heard that word, because one, yeah, that's, but yes, okay.
Seems to be happening, it seems to be.
The way they are, it's not redistricting, it's germanding.
I have, I have a question.
Fortunately, it's happening in a lot of states.
Regarding the salaries of the registrar of voters, given that the work is expanding, are there salaries being adjusted?
Yeah, you can see that there's an increase in there, um, twenty-eight over, um, last year.
So is that a new position, or is that an additional benefit?
That's an increase to their current level.
And there's two registrar voters?
There is.
What?
Yes, there is. One from each party.
Excuse me.
What is, what is the requirement with these changes, an assistant to the registrar of each party's voter? Or something else?
No, just additional staffing when you're going through an election.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
I thought maybe they've imposed more standards, Jesus God, okay. Oh dear. All right.
Has that actually been voted on?
I don't know, that's why I asked.
I don't think so.
Yeah, if there, if these are any, uh, if there's requirements, or this is just in general wishlist of needed additional people, I just didn't know.
What do you mean voted on by the select?
No, legislation.
Legend, that's what I was asking, yeah. You don't know Penny, huh?
I don't think so.
Okay.
They're, they're in session, how can they vote on it?
Well, that, yeah. But maybe they already did and I missed something, you know, it's possible.
Think so.
No, all right. Okay, uh. Health and security, Anne, you want to move on here?
Yep, sure, I mean, health and security is projected as of now.
As of now, with their obviously with their broker, and it's projecting eighteen months in advance for the increase.
Wow.
Let's see, oh, Kevin pension, as you know, that's done by the ADAC, so that's done by our actuarial, so, uh, that they come up with, that's what we, um.
Yeah.
Insurance liability, um, unfortunately with, uh, for municipal, uh, governments, and this is throughout the whole country, the umbrella policies are seeing an increase, they started this year and they're continuing into next year. Um, relating to cybersecurity, so you're seeing an increase mainly on, um, umbrella policies.
Can I go back to health, Judy, uh, and Neil?
Yeah.
Um, this is the, the, um, perennial discussion about these, the, these health numbers being incorporated into the municipal side and into the Board of Education side. And some of these things we don't have any control over.
Right.
You know, is it not time to take this out of the municipal budget and out of the Board of Education budget? So that it is treated separately and not affect operations or programming?
Do, do, so, the benefits is a part of the cost of the employees. So it really should stay in from the municipal standpoint of the general fund, because that is your cost to hire your employees and those particular benefit pa, benefit plans that you offer. The issue, not the issue, the, the offset though, is that the town has an internal service fund. And the internal service fund is the one that's designed to try and keep the general fund, you know, somewhat, uh, you know, the raises to be slower, so that if there is a particular year where you have a really bad year, the internal service fund is picking that spike or the other side, the drop. So that you try and keep the general fund as flat as possible, but the expenses have to stay in here because they belong to your work, they belong to the benefit of the, uh, the employees, so it's a cost of your.
Okay, I, I, I think, I think I am really probably more referring to the internal services fund then.
Yeah, that, that has its own fund to try and pick up so that you can keep the general fund flatter and not have the spikes. Well, that fund picks it up, because it, 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 it has time to regroup if you had a bad year.
Okay, but it isn't that way on the Board of Education side then, correct?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to, I've been doing the town side, I haven't had a chance to go into the Board of Ed to look at theirs and how their, um, claims have gone, to know uh, how their numbers go.
Okay, because you have no control over that, I mean, you can have a bad year and you can have a good year. And so it either does or doesn't, uh, uh, benefit the overall, say, Board of Education budget. But it, but it is a factor, it, it, it doesn't, it doesn't give a clear picture of what the operations side of, um, running the schools is.
Penny, I think, I think we normally, or at least the Board of Finance, try, and correct me if I'm wrong Judy and Neil, they try to look at it by, and this year would probably be a good example of that increase that's coming through, where they try to look at it, at the operating budget without that, that, um, healthcare benefit number throwing it off significantly.
Okay, it is problematic on the education, yes, I think.
But Penny, your, your point is well taken, what, it, it doesn't reflect the true operations, it impacts, you know, the, the, the cost of, uh, of, of the labor and the, the fluctuations that occur on the healthcare side, but I, I understand what you're trying to get, is the true operations of the, of the, of the town or the Board of Ed without this healthcare.
Right, okay, so it's really the internal services, uh, section, not, not this other, because that, that deals with the employees. You know, in particular, so, so I get it, I was, I was off, I was off.
I think it addresses your question about combining internal services funds for Board of Ed and the town. This is the separate, this is the employee.
I get, I, I get it now, I'm sorry.
All right.
Okay, separate discussion. Moving along, parking?
Parking. Parking is a, also point six percent. Parking is a also 0.6% increase over last year. Which is really, again, salary increases.
Yeah. Wow.
So moving on to.
Dance service.
Dance service kind of is what it is, so 2.7% increase from last year.
Yeah, that is, I mean, you're not, yeah, that, that's just done. Contingency is, wow. And, and explain that maybe, huh?
So we, we have a general contingency that we do now, is the three hundred thousand is the general contingency if anything was to go wrong and unexpected, we have the contingency to draw on from the whole, all the different departments. We then separate out a volunteer tax abatement, so any volunteer, it affects the tax collector's office that we abate the taxes for anyone that's a volunteer, typically firefighters, things like that. So we use that contingency for when we abate those tax bills, they come due in July. And then the salary contingency is when you don't have either, you know, settled contracts or your non-union discretionary, and it's not set yet, you need to put something in there. The salaries are what they are from a contractual standpoint for valid contracts right now. But then you have the ones that either need to be settled or you have the non-union, I would call, employees that at some point will get an increase as of July first to be determined.
So I'm sorry, can you go back to, I was trying to understand the volunteer tax abatement, can, can you repeat that portion?
So if we have, typically it's volunteer firefighters, they have their taxes, it's EMS, it's EMS, thank you.
Yeah, that, that's related to the ordinance that, or the, that we passed.
Right, so it allows for their taxes to be abated.
Yeah, Rita, that was something that we did last year related to trying to incentivize, uh, trying to incentivize those areas.
Got it.
And the senior, and the senior benefits from a tax standpoint aren't budgeted. They come out of the difference between ninety-eight points five and a hundred percent.
Right, they'll come out in the tax collector's grant list when it gets finalized, the grant list, yeah.
Right.
So what contracts are pending here or is this just non-binding employee?
I believe they said all the contracts are in place, right?
Yeah.
I think, I think they're done, so it must be all non-union.
Well, actually, DPW is, I'm done, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So again, the, the, the difference between the submission and the modified for the salary contingency is really just relate, again, I mean, since this is non-union, how am I, how am I supposed to understand how that number comes in so much lower?
When the contracts were still being negotiated perhaps, we weren't exactly sure what to put into the salary contingency until they were settled and then that. I believe that transfer is being done in FY twenty-two for fire, DPW and police. And so that no longer needs to be kept in that number.
Can you just check on that because that, that, I mean, if we, if we've done all of the union contracts, this would have to reflect only the increases being held in here for.
Non-union.
Non-union, and that, that doesn't, that just does not sound right, I don't know. Something, something else is in here, I'm not sure. I, I've never seen it like that, I just, I'm wondering, on a non-union year, in other words, in an off negotiating. Unless there's still an outstanding contract, but Public Works was settled, fire, is police pending, I'm just.
No, I believe it's just settled.
Done, right, yeah, I thought.
I think Public Works is the only one that hasn't been brought to town council yet, you have to correct me if I'm wrong, no.
Well, so is that here then, if it hasn't gone to town council, maybe that's still in here. But that would not reflect July, that would be now, that'd be last.
Yeah, yeah, I'll get confirmation, we'll get confirmation on this one.
Yeah.
And a silly question for me, but why is this something that, I mean, it's not something that we've had in the past, why is this a new line item?
So it is something that was in FY twenty-two's budget. And I'd have to go back through historical data to see if it was prior to FY nineteen.
I just, okay, that would be a question because it.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get that one too, it just don't have in the history.
I don't think the way that works, it would show itself in the actuals because it would be transferred out of the actuals to make up for the salaries that it's.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, the way I'm looking at it is, you know, we have half a million dollars of contingency here. Well, assuming we've removed the tax payment, that's, you know, in years past was zero. At least starting in nineteen, I don't see any expense maybe.
So that's in nineteen, twenty and twenty-one, those are actual numbers, not the budgeted. So if we had a half a million in there to begin with as a budgeted and we transferred that money out of that.
To the right locations.
It would reflect zero.
Okay, and that makes, and that makes total sense, but, you know, the numbers, as, the actual numbers have gone from zero to, you know, twenty-two, looking close to.
Half a million.
Half a million, or a quarter of a million, or, sorry, a third of them.
To me, so we need more detail here, I'm just trying to figure out what else is in there because you put salary in the line in the department, in the budget that's reflective of the end of the year, which would, or fiscal year, which is July, end of June, not, not, I don't get where it's coming in here also. Something, I'm missing something, I don't know what it is, all right.
And if the number's always lower, then why are we budgeting so much higher, I guess?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't understand either.
Are we, are we having a follow-up meeting because I'm looking for the other budgets for the other departments that are not here?
What other departments?
Public Works, Fire.
This is, that's not under government.
Different.
That's, that's not government.
Okay, I see what you.
You, you were already in that one, Christina.
Yes. Yes and no, not for.
Well, we had Health and Human Services yesterday, you were in Public Works before.
Yes, but I'm expecting the budget just like this is laid out for those departments.
We had them.
It's, it's in there, maybe it wasn't, you know, in the detail.
Didn't print out for me here, so I'm trying to find.
So this is only.
This was, this was only general government, not all.
Okay, fine, fine.
All right, any questions on inner fund transfers, I don't think so, that's pretty basic. General revenue, you want to go through revenues here?
Sure, so.
I don't know a lot of time on this, what about the, the, the one that obviously, what is the state, state telephone line grant, wow, what is this? Is that a, um, no, it's, it's the same, never mind, it was a funny figure. All right, um.
Anything else?
No, I, I'm pretty good here, this is typical, actually good. All right. Town clerk, any questions, that's.
First stop on conveyance fees and.
Yeah, that's.
Expected right now, well, in this environment.
Yeah, that's, that's what it is, I mean, yeah, our insurance liability. Member parking permits, I guess that's, oh, parking. Subject to whatever is next. I hope that's reliable, I mean, I hope we can get some of this back, but we'll see.
Okay, this is good, all right.
I think we're done, right?
Or unless you want to quickly go over capital.
Yeah, we're, yeah.
So we're only really touching on capital for general governments. So that would be starting with the tax assessors office, which is beginning, it's twenty-twenty-three townwide rebow, which is two years of a hundred and fifty thousand. Moving on to IT, it's, it's typical IT software, eight thousand each. Moving on to, I think that's, that's it, actually, so it's just those two.
Good.
Well, that's not so bad, all right.
Good.
Do you guys have any?
Anything, anybody?
No. I'm good. Okay.
All right, so we are, we are finished at three of six.
Good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Judy. Thank you, everyone.
Great.